Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would go ahead and call the July 11th, 2017 Midwest City Council Meeting to order. Thank you for being here this evening. We've got a star-studded lineup tonight. I would like to call, ask for you to stand and call Tim Lyon down to lead us in the invocation. The Councilman Rick Dawkins will lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in prayer. Our dear Father in heaven, as we stand before thee this evening, grateful for this opportunity to gather, to gather with the freedoms this country has given us. We're thankful for those that have sacrificed for these freedoms and ask thee to bless them and their families. Father, we ask thee to watch over us this evening, that thy Spirit might be with us, that these men and women on our council may be blessed with thy Spirit to make the decisions that are in the best interest of our community, in the best interest of all of our citizens that they serve and represent. Father, we ask thee to watch over our employees here in Midwest City, that they may, they may be safe from harm and they may be watched over. And these things we pray for in this evening, in the name of thy holy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and be seated, please. Are there any community-related announcements that anybody would like to pass on during the horseshoe?
Just got, Susan, do you have one? Do you have any? Okay. We did receive the first sales tax check for this fiscal year last Friday. We were encouraged that it was up compared to the previous year, up about $51,000, which is about 2 percent, a 2 percent increase. Use tax was actually down about 4 percent. However, that only represents about $5,000. So, so for the month, we were 1.71 percent over last year. However, compared to projection, we were only 0.84 percent. We did include in the budget projections a 1 percent increase in sales and use tax for next year. So, but on the positive, not the negative. So, that's a, that's a good thing. And I just wanted to thank all of our city employees, whether it's the street department, the parks department, the police department, the fire department, everybody within the city pretty much touches the Fourth of July event in some way or another. And so, I think we had a great event, a lot of community support for the event. I don't, I never got a number, but my guess it was at least 10,000 in the park and around the park. So, I would just want to thank all the employees for another great job. So.
Any other community announcements? Is Ruthie Phillips in the audience tonight? Just let me, let me read a little bit. Ms. Phillips was in the parking lot of Crest on the day of the airshow. She works at Crest, and she rescued a baby and a young child from a locked car. The car was in the parking lot. The grandma had inadvertently tossed the keys in the backseat, and the doors were locked as she got out. Ms. Phillips was able to squeeze her arm, a great bodily injury, I might add, down in between a cracked window and the door, and open up the door and get the, get the children out. And she had the presence of mind to do so and follow through with that. And we do have a certificate of appreciation for her efforts. And we tried to get a halt over. We never got a halt over. Was hoping she'd show up. But anyway, that's just one of many things that our citizens do every day, ladies and gentlemen. And we like to appreciate them and show them our appreciation when they do that. I would like to take a minute of executive privilege, if you will. Obviously, there's one particular issue that most of you are here about. And I would like to, with the council's permission, get out of the normal order of business and move to discussion item eight through 12. And Ms. Hawk, would you come down to the podium, please?
If you don't mind, I'll read the agenda item. D8 is discussion consideration of potential capital projects to be included in a future general bond issue.
Before you get started, Ms. Hawk, I want to explain to you what we're doing this evening. There's obviously an issue with our animal shelter. And, and we get it. So therefore, I'm asking council, with their indulgence, to pull this item and not take any action on it this evening, so we can take this item back to committee and add funding for, now, I can't lock us in, so I have to say this the way it's supposed to be said, either renovation or the construction of a new animal shelter. We, we know the need. I won't go through the gory details of how we got to this, but we are going to add it on to the GO bond and bring it back to the council for their consideration. And it will probably be after the first of the year before we're able to do this. So, with that being said, and I just want to put everybody's mind at ease that we've heard you and we're going to take care of it. And Ms. Hawk, with that being said, I'm going to ask you to act as spokesman for your group, and maybe we can save some time this evening. And let me, and Janet, especially you, don't think for a minute that I take offense, or anybody on this horseshoe takes offense, for our citizens reaching out to us. That's what you elect us to do. We are your representatives on this horseshoe and in the city administration. We take your concerns, and sometimes we're successful and sometimes we're not. But that's what representative government is all about. I received about 127 emails this weekend, and I get it. And I want to thank each and every one of you, and Janet, you too, for doing that. That's how you get things done in municipal government. Last council meeting, we approved a traffic light for the Orchard Edition, and they took on the same mantra. They went out and did what we asked. They came back, and their, their voice was heard. So, I want to thank each and every one of you for doing that and, and making sure that your voice is heard. And that's what our government's all about. With that being said, Ms. Hawk, the floor is yours.
Before she talks to Mr. Mayor, on the consent agenda, there's, there's another related as a result of echoing what you just said. I asked that number seven be pulled. It has to do with the animal welfare.
Okay. When we, when we get to that, thank you.
So, just it's part of what you just said?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to start out, if maybe you could further explain to us in detail as far as numbers go, what you're referencing as far as the amount for the shelter that would be put back on the bond?
Well, right now, I don't know, Ms. Hawk. I'm going to have to consult, well, not I, but all of us are going to have to consult with Chief Clavens and Adrian to see exactly what we're going to do as far as what we're going to build. Now, I will tell you and be upfront and honest with you, the facility that was recommended in the study is a Taj Mahal, and I don't think we can get there. But we can certainly build a better facility that's better suited for what Midwest City's needs are. I'm thinking just ballparking 1.5 to 1.7 million, at least to get us on the drawing board and get us started. Obviously, we can design it in such a way where we can expand it later. But again, I'm just one person. That's just my thoughts after reviewing the, the study and talking with Mr. Sanders and, and, and taking in consideration our overall daily operation, how many dogs we take in, our, our rate on returning them back to, to owners and getting them adopted, which I might add is one of the highest in the metro. And, and we'll just have to build it to Midwest City's needs. And I'll have to defer to the chief and the animal welfare folks on, on where we go from there. So, that's kind of what I'm thinking. I don't know what it's going to look like.
Can I interject a thought of mine, as we're thinking, which is a good thing to think? Why don't we look a little bigger and talk to the surrounding cities that, and see if they want to join in on the bond? And see if they want to help fund a facility? Because there's, we're taking in their animals now, and we're really losing money doing it. And it adds to our kill rate. Let's give them the opportunity. Choctaw specifically, because there's talks that they are looking at doing something anyway. Let's look and see if we can do something, would take care of the cities and have those cities that want to use our facility actually put their tax dollars, like we are, to good use. That's my thought. And I'd like to have staff maybe reach out to the surrounding cities and see if anybody wants to salute that flag. And if they don't, then we're on our own. And my opinion is they're on their own.
I'll take it on as a personal agenda to reach out to Mayor Ross over at Choctaw and run that flag up the pole.
Mayor, also, I'd like to say something. I brought it up before when Chief Clavens was up discussing the results of the study and the needs for the animal shelter. I volunteer time this has my daughter with other rescue groups. I've had some emails with Chief Clavens and Mr. Sanders about the rescue groups that participate with our shelter. And if we might be looking at forming a committee and including some of the individuals that are involved, heavily involved with rescue groups on that committee in terms of determining what might best suit our needs here in Midwest City, I think that would be a welcomed opportunity for a number of our citizens to join in that have some knowledge in the field.
We can certainly do that. Yes, ma'am.
I basically, okay, just listening and enjoying and, and the creative feedback. And thank you, Councilman Reed, for the creative thinking there and looking forward to seeing where this goes and where this takes us. I would continue to encourage the council and mayor to continue to look at the bigger picture of the $3 million in fully funding, going back to the SPA study, which is the Shelter Planners of America Study conducted in November 2014 for our shelter, based upon our needs and the current status at that time. And looking at what their recommendations are and their reasoning for those recommendations. Like you said, it's Taj Mahal. But also, like you said at the last council meeting, you know, that you want to have a healthy city for our, for our community. And we want to live up to certain standards. And we have to start somewhere. And in regards to our shelter, if we want our own citizens to have better animal, pet ownership responsibility for their own pets, you know, we need to invest in our animal welfare accordingly. Who are they to want to have more respect for their own animals, or how they're treating them, or whether or not they have tags on them, if we're not preaching to, you know, if we're not living our own, out our own words and what we have to say. So, by investing in a better animal shelter, we will be setting an example for our own residents here in our community. In addition, I would just like to share a few words in regards to our experience and why I'm here today, what, what brought me here, so that you have a little bit more knowledge. I was born and raised here in Midwest City. I was born in the Oklahoma City Children's Hospital, to be exact, but born and raised here at 1221 West Sun Valley over there behind Heritage Park Mall. And we rescued lots of stray animals throughout our life. That was probably one of my most favorite hobbies with my father, growing up. Lots of animals that came in and out of our lives. We never took them to the Midwest City Shelter. We took them to 29th Street. I don't know where y'all went. Anybody, anybody else go to 29th Street? We didn't know Midwest City had a shelter. You know, when you think about going to adopt a dog, the first thing that enters your mind is not, hey, let's go to the landfill and hang out across the street and find a new fluffy puppy. It's just not what you think. You know, where do I want to go dump a dog? Well, let's go out in the boonies across the street from the dump. That's a good place. There's probably some trash out there that they can eat. So, I just urge you to understand that our biggest challenge, from my personal perspective in regards to community relations, is the physical location of our shelter. It is not in a pleasant location. It's not in a high-traffic area. Our, our community doesn't even, is, is, the awareness is low within our community about the shelter's existence. I didn't learn about it. I am now 39 years old until 10 years ago, when I moved back here. I was in Choctaw, and I saw one of the adoption trailers on the corner, right there off of 23rd Street. Oh, my goodness! I about jumped out of my seat. We have an animal shelter? I've got to learn about this. And so, a few years later, I began volunteering at the shelter. And that was approximately four years ago. And there, I met some of the most amazing people in my life. I was able to connect on my very first day volunteering with Jana Beller and Lisa Chambers Thompson. And I didn't know what journey I was about to, what journey was about to occur in my life. And while my tenure at the shelter didn't last for much longer, it was really kind of more like a, I'd say, three or four months endeavor, I got to watch the beginning of a transformation that was incredible. One of the greatest, greatest things that's happened to our shelter since, I believe, since it was built, was the police department taking over. The amount of attention that has gotten, that it has received, and the new leadership has made an extreme difference. They have done everything they can with the resources that they have. It does not get any better than it is now. And they should be applauded for the efforts that they have done. So, first of all, I just want to make sure that the city is aware. That is a tremendous decision, that it benefited greatly for our furry animal community and our two-legged friends, too. In regards to that statement, in that story, Jana and Lisa and I saw the epidemic. This is an epidemic. It's, we're not alone. This pet overpopulation doesn't just affect us here in Midwest City. You all, this is nationwide. It's a cultural issue, yes. But we have to provide the right services. And when we saw what was going on, we were like, we've got to do more than just this. We can't just coming, coming here to walk the dogs and feed them and help out with those duties is helping the shelter, yes. But we've got to stop this madness. So, we formed our own group called Good Dogma. We are a 501(c) nonprofit organization here in Oklahoma. We aim to reduce the pet overpopulation in Midwest City, Jones, Hara, Nakoma Park, and Choctaw. I believe that's all of them, for our surrounding communities. We give away free pet tags. We've given away over 1,000 free pet ID tags to date. We also have a partnership that we just forged with the shelter to give away free pet tags to all adopters and those who reclaim their pets. We also sponsor spay and neuters for families in need and provide food and shelter and/or other pet supplies to those in need. Learn more at gooddogma.org. I'm not making a pitch. This does not benefit my back pocket. This is not, I'm not going to gain anything from this other than improving the welfare of our two and four-legged animals in our community. So, I urge you, and I am very grateful for the attention, Mayor, that you have given to this matter, and Councilman Reed and Councilman Byrne, thank you all very much for taking the time to visit the shelter, to learn about our needs and how great that they genuinely are. I know y'all have a lot on your plate. I just, I want to leave you with one quote, and, and I will be done here. And let me just find it right quick, because if I try to do it by memory, I probably will ruin it. Okay. So, the, the quote here that I have is that the greatness of a nation can be determined by the way we treat our animals. And that is something I think is very powerful and very true. And I hope that y'all all think about it. Take that home with you and just, and think about that. How we treat our animals does represent us who we are as a community, the ethic of our community and going forward. And we can set a standard. If we're America's model city, let's have America's Model Welfare Center. And don't think of it as a welfare center. Last statement, think of it as a community center. It's our animal community center. This new infrastructure that we could provide can be more than just an intake, holding, and adoption place. This can be a place where we partner with other organizations to provide low-cost spay-neuter services, low-cost veterinary services to the community in, in our area, to our residents. It can be more than that. We can have clinics. We can have adoption days. We can have festivals. It's an area where people go to learn. People are, are better educated. Our shelter staff can do better and more outreach. Right now, being limited to where they are, they don't get that kind of foot traffic. So, if you increase the foot traffic, not only are the adoption rates going to increase, but our knowledge within our own community and our residents, better animal, pet ownership will occur. So, I implore you to think about it differently than just a welfare center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk, and thank you. Again, I truly do appreciate all y'all being here. It, it shows that you've got an interest in your community. I think volunteerism is probably the most significant thing that you can do to give back to your community. And I applaud all of you for doing what you're doing. And again, being a lifelong Midwest City resident, this is what Midwest City's all about. And again, with that being said, this item, again, I'm suggesting that we take no action and move it back to committee. Thank you all very much. And we will move back to the regular agenda.
We've got a little lady out there who would like to say something.
Well, come forward, young lady.
I'm Molly Haskett, and... I'm Molly Haskett, and I love animals. I made snowmen for six dollars each to raise money for the shelters. And I, I made $1,200, and I gave 250 to five shelters. And I, and one of them is Midwest City. I've been to Midwest City three times, and every time I have gone to look at the dogs, and there's only like 24 kennels there. And Midwest City has gotten larger, which means more stray dogs. So, I think we should get a, a bigger animal shelter to help these pets. Um, last month, 70 percent were saved, but 30 percent were killed. So, most of the time, it's 20 percent. But if you, if you, um, make this shelter bigger, you can save those 20 percent. And I think that is a very good idea. My Grammy found a stray dog, and she took it in. And now she is very sweet and very loyal. And she, if somebody she doesn't recognize comes to the door, she will bark and bark and bark. But she's only protecting, protecting her savior. She was almost near death when she crawled, crawled on their property. So, she was saved. And, um, well... Two months ago, I donated, two months ago is when I donated the money. And I think that if you expand the shelter, that these animals will be happier. And like you, like she said, that if we expand the shelter, it will make people want to save their pets more. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Molly Haskett.
Katie, can you make her your spokesman?
She's hired. Hope she works for zero and hours.
You bet. Janet, come on forward.
Okay, forgive me if I cry.
Just for the record, Janet, could you give me your name and address, please?
My name is Jana Beller, 909 Lotus Avenue. I am a proud volunteer of four years at the Midwest City Animal Shelter. I am also a proud member of Good Dogma. I would like to start off by saying the two best things that ever happened to the shelter were when Chief Clavens and the Midwest City Police Department took the shelter over. The second is when they hired Adrian Sanders as supervisor. Four, four years ago, our kill rate was 70 percent. That went on for years. The shelter is 31 years old. I went to the shelter 15 years ago. I lived in Choctaw at that time. And I thought, wow, it's so amazing. They don't have any dogs for adoption. They're doing such a great job. I didn't realize they were killing everything that walked in the doors. This last fiscal year, we've had the highest live release rate ever at 80 percent. And I owe that a lot to Adrian, his vision. We hired a part-time rescue coordinator. We send about half of our animals to rescue to achieve that number. A lot of people don't know where we are. We do not have a presence in the community except on Facebook and social media. I tell people, come to the shelter. And they're like, I went, I did. I went to the shelter on 29th Street. Or I, and, and I help run the Friends page, and people are constantly looking for their dogs. Or we've had just multiple instances, I've, I've been checking the shelter every day, or I'm checking online. OKC has a site called Pet Harbor. You can check for your strays online. We, we do not have that. And I'll be like, well, have, have you been over on 36th Street? Well, what are you talking about? They have no idea we have a shelter after this many years and even as much progress as we've made the last four years. The shelter is the only city-run facility I know that constantly has to ask for donations from the public. Adrian keeps a list, a wish list, on, up there at the desk of cleaning supplies. Or if we need kitty litter, I've seen him ask for kitty litter to be donated to the shelter. He does everything in his power to stretch his budget as much as he can. We are short-staffed. They are. They are. I, I can't speak on behalf of the shelter. This is what I witnessed as a volunteer. They are short-staffed. A lot of the improvements that were done, were done through people volunteering and donating items. I've seen the shelter apply for grants through the hospital authority and be denied, and that money be awarded to study Heritage Park Mall. That's disappointing. That's very disappointing that the animal welfare is not put in the forefront. The citizens and animals deserve better. The shelter, the shelter, we need a presence. I'm proud to say now that we're not just animal control, that it is animal welfare. It's not about bringing them in, serving stray It's not about bringing them in, serving stray, holding, killing them. We are there for the welfare. We are there to try to get these dogs out, get them adopted. Um, fingers crossed, if I make it to October, it will be three years that I haven't had any healthy adoptable cats euthanized. But that doesn't mean cats aren't being euthanized. They are. Sick, injured, feral. Um, I am not asking for a no-kill shelter. I don't think that's ever a reality in any community. Every shelter has to euthanize. We serve a purpose in our community. Um, I want to close this up with saying that, um, a new shelter is in need for our community and it is not a want. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure how far down anybody's dug into the numbers, but you know, they've quoted a couple of different kill rates, 30%, 20%. But if you really look at the numbers, and I did with my accountant over there, Sean Reed, because he's a numbers guy, the, the kill rate is really only less than 5%. Because when you look at the ones that are euthanized, uh, the owners requested, they have no choice. They're going to euthanize them when they come in the door, if that's what the owner wants. The untreatable and unhealthy, they can't, they can't do anything for them. They're beyond help. If you take those out of that mix, and you just look at the healthy, the treatable, rehabilitatable, and the treatable manageable, there was only 68 last year. So that gets down to 4%.
Thank you for pointing that out. Again...
I do want to point out to Good Dogma and a few of the others, that, that one of the reasons that the kill ratio is 5% is 511 of the 1,642 dogs that were in cats that were taken in, they were sent to another no-kill shelter or another adoption agency. So Adrian has done a wonderful job. Absolutely. And I, I've been to the shelter several times. Pat's been there once or twice. A lot of thank goes to these organizations out there and a lot of, the praise goes to Adrian for setting up the communication and the volunteers for setting that up to find another avenue to help adopt the dogs and cats, especially when we get pressure, which we had the other day. You were full by four o'clock on Monday, if I remember correctly. You took another animal and you were either going to have to get somebody to adopt one, get an organization to get it, or you're going to have to euthanize one. So they have done a good job as a concerted effort between private and, 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 um, public organizations. It's been incredible.
Can I please speak? I'm with a rescue and house shelter.
Yes, ma'am. Come forward, please. Please state your name and address and city.
Um, I'm Farrah Peyton Snyder. I'm the founding president of Friends of the Shelter Foundation. Um, little background on us is we're a dog rescue that was founded in 2013 to help any small-town rural Oklahoma shelter. You may be wondering why we help Midwest City. Um, they have 12 kennels for strays and 12 for adoptions. We are founded in Newcastle. I don't know if any of you have ever been down that way, but it's a tiny town compared to Midwest City. We have 12 kennels at the Newcastle shelter total. So put that into perspective a little bit. Midwest City is easily six times the size of Newcastle. And that's why we're here. That's why we help them. And they fill up quickly. And when space runs out, they literally have no other alternative than to euthanize. They reach out to rescues like mine, and we do everything we can to help them. Um, I also want to add that it's been a pleasure to work with the entire staff at Midwest City Shelter. They literally bend over backwards to help out area rescues whenever possible. Tricia is a magician at finding placement for animals in need. Adrian is always willing to dog test a dog for me to make sure that he or she will play well with others, because we are a foster-based rescue and that's vital information to know. Um, even the resident shelter cat force gets involved to let us know if they're good with cats, um, which is also very useful, because a lot of our fosters have cats. Um, the shelter's number, numbers simply wouldn't be where they are if it weren't for the dedicated staff that you have. Um, I just simply ask you to do the right thing. Follow through with the promise of a new facility and adoption center. Put both, uh, buildings in the same location.
Yes, ma'am.
It will add to public confusion to separate them, in my opinion. Get them another ACO to help them out. They are just strapped. Their jobs are thankless and at times heartbreaking. Compassion fatigue is a very real thing in their line of work. So as a community, we need to come together to help them every way we can. And instead of complaining about your local animal shelter, go volunteer there for a week. Find out exactly what they have to deal with, because I could never do their job. That's my two cents. I hope it's worth 3.2 million.
Thank you for, uh, thank you for putting it forward. Yes, ma'am. Come on forward.
How are you, sir?
I'm good.
I want to thank you because I called yesterday and had meetings all day. I didn't get your return, but you left me a message with your cell phone. And I just think that speaks to the kind of leader you are. So thank you. My name is Shade Nash. All of you have heard from me, uh, via call and email, and I appreciate your time. I'm a volunteer at the shelter. Um, we have rental properties here, but I'm an Oklahoma City, uh, citizen or resident, I guess I should say. Um, and I went to the shelter for the first time because there was a call for a need, excuse me, um, that Adrian put out for, uh, food and with the list that Janet was talking about. So we showed up, my mother, my niece and I, with the goods, the bags of things, and realized there was a greater need. And I've been involved ever since. It's been about two and a half months, I believe. Um, two and a half of the most rewarding months, uh, that I've had in a long, long time. Um, but I want to talk to the kill rate. Um, the kill rate, I, I can't imagine that those numbers are accurate, Mr. Byrne, because since I've been there, I know what I've witnessed. Um, but I also know that I've witnessed countless hours of work and effort from the shelter employees and the volunteers and these amazing people, um, the rescue dogs. And I just wanted to point out to everyone that those numbers are what they are because the people at the shelter are paying money out of their own pockets. They are spending their own money to board dogs, to get them out of the shelters and board them so they're safe and not euthanized. And then they figure out a plan. And a lot of times, it's these amazing rescues that step in and help them, transport them to states that, can you imagine, have a, a dog shortage? That's the community we want to be. We want to have that problem. But we're not there yet. So we need your help desperately. And, um, I will continue to drive to Midwest City and do what I can. We will continue to buy rental properties here and spend tremendous amounts of money at Home Depot and embrace your community, because truly, it's a, an incredible community. Um, and we're proud to be a part of it. So thank you. Thank you again for your cell phone number. That was very impressive. Um, and thank you for your time. And please, the shelter is, the need is great. The $3 million is something that we really need to consider. Um, it's not a million-dollar thing, because we need to think broad. As this community grows and becomes more incredible, we need to be there to meet the needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nash.
Ms. Nash, just, Ms. Nash, just to clarify on the kill rate, what I was talking about was the healthy ones that we're putting down, not the ones that, and, and I'm getting these figures from Adrian right there. And that's, the reference I was making is, was those are the ones that are healthy and probably could be adopted, not the ones that were sick and, or the owners came in. Because it, the number was 315 last year. But the significant number of those were ones that were not treatable or were owner-requested. What I was giving Adrian credit for is that actually there was only 68 dogs or cats that probably could have been adopted out if he had the space.
I, I have a comment that I'd like to weigh in on. One thing, um, that you touched on, ma'am, was the issue of there's a constant campaign for find or fund Fido a flight, because we are flying dogs out of our state, not just our community, but out of our state to Colorado and to Washington, because they are accepting them with open arms. One big issue that we have is the failure of people to spay and neuter and be responsible pet owners, which the more they multiply, the harder problem we have to find good homes for them. Um, so again, one thing that I would ask of any committee that we form to discuss any renovations or building a new shelter, is to also focus on the educational component, um, and the spay and neuter campaign. Um, as we're all aware, we do some contracting on spay and neuter, uh, but we need to broaden that, because we do have a problem in not just our community, but, I mean, statewide. So we can stop putting animals on planes and shipping them to the western states.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I, please, just 30 seconds, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to clarify. I feel like we might be getting a little off track here in regards to the fact, because this is a very emotional topic, okay? Very emotional. And I understand discussing the kill rate and whatnot. And we owe that to Adrian and the volunteers. I don't mean to be rude, but we certainly don't owe it to additional funding that we've gotten over the last four years, okay? Um, the reason we're here today is if you read the Shelter Planners of America study, we're here today because of the poor quality in which that building that they are in, that's been existence, in existence since for 31 years. It's in total disrepair. It is not adequate for them to do their job. So they're juggling other challenges. This is why we're here today. We need an adequate facility. At the same time, we've determined that there are other issues that could benefit, that we can benefit from. So let's focus on that. It's not that we have a great low kill rate, so we don't need to make any difference. We don't need to make a change. Everything's great. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
Katie, I can, I can promise you that wasn't where Pat was going.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I know it's an emotional topic. So, thank you.
I know. But that's, he and I have discussed this. And what the comment really was, was what the volunteers have done is what's kept it so low.
Absolutely.
And the fact that we truly are only putting down less than 5% of healthy animals to, to rehabilitatable, treatable animals.
Sure.
Is a great, because, and Pat and I talked about it, it's because of our volunteers and it's because of Adrian. I'm going to give Adrian the majority of credit.
Yeah.
But there was, there was no dismissing by that. He was saying what a great job Adrian and you guys have done.
Gotcha. Absolutely. Just imagine what they can do when they have the proper facility and other resources.
Right.
Thank you.
With that being said...
Y'all can have your meeting.
Thank you, Janet. With that being said, there'll be no action taken on these four items. It'll go back to committee.
Do we have to call each other individually?
I'm sorry?
We don't?
No. And, uh, we will return back to the agenda as written and go into the consent agenda. And again, I want to thank each of you for being here this evening. Um, we go into the consent agenda, the consent, these items are placed on consent agenda so that members of the city council by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members or members of the audience which discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. Councilman Burns has asked that, uh, item seven be removed and discussed. With that being said, I would entertain a motion.
Move to otherwise approve the consent agenda, uh, with the exception of item seven.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Councilman Burns, go ahead with your discussion.
Let me read this. This is discussion consideration of renewing the agreement with the city of Hara for animal services for fiscal year 2017-18.
To qualify this, and, and the city manager can verify this, I'm down to only three dog or three animals at my house. Two rescue dogs and a rescue cat. And I can always tell, I used to always be able to tell when the city manager walked his dog, because my kennel dumped in the front yard and they would let me know when he was walking. So I, I am an animal lover. So by going to the, by going to the, uh, animal welfare and by reading this report that you all have talked about tonight, I, I have an issue with the city of Midwest City being in a position where we are setting our employees up to fail. And that's what I think we're doing by entering into these contracts with these other cities. Because based off of this study, it's not my numbers, it's this study that you guys were quoting, it costs $139 an animal to house an animal out at our shelter. And we are just now raising the fee of Hara to $105. So every animal that we take in out there, we're asking the staff at the animal welfare building to do more than in putting them in a position where they don't have the, the resources, I don't personally think, to adequately handle that. And, and I'm not dismissing Hara or Choctaw or any of the other cities that we have contracts with, but this is a Midwest City shelter. This should serve the citizens of Midwest City. I don't think it should serve all of eastern Oklahoma County. And that's what it's doing right now. Because we are, we are losing money. And Adrian, I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm sure you'll, you know better than I, we're losing money every day. But besides that, Mr. Reed made a comment just a little bit ago about when we're full out there, correct me if I'm wrong, Adrian, if we're full and there's adoptable pets out there that just haven't, somebody hasn't come and got yet, and they're not due to be euthanized, they're healthy and adoptable pets, if one of the other jurisdictions brings in an animal, you're going to be faced with the, the, uh, the choice of, do I put this healthy animal down because I'm going to bring in a dog from another jurisdiction? And I don't, is, is that an accurate statement?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And that's wrong. That is wrong.
I have a little information that you can...
Could you approach the podium, Mr....
And the other question I have is, from what I've been told, and trust me, my phone's been ringing off the wall too, all weekend. And you answer one email, you get a ton more. You answer one phone call, you get a ton more of those, too. Is it true that our policy out there, anybody can walk in the door out there and say, I want to drop this animal off? And they don't have to be from Midwest City? And we just have to accept? Is that true?
When, now, we're talking the difference between owner surrenders and we're talking the difference between that and strays.
Somebody's driving down the street and they, they pick up a dog and say, I found this dog in your city.
Correct.
And they live in Tulsa. And if they tell us that dog they found on Reno, we're going to have to take it.
If they stick to their story and that's, yes, sir, that's what we have to do. And I know it's hard to...
I think that's encouraging danger, dangerous behavior. Have, instead of encouraging them outside of the city to bring a stray, if it's truly a stray, we should encourage them to call 911. But if it's truly a stray, and I know that we talked about this, a lot of the people who bring in strays who don't live in Midwest City, they're not strays. They're, they're animals and they're just dumping them.
Right. I mean, there, there is ways to...
But I, I, I think that we moderate and encourage the behavior of those. Instead of those that truly do find a stray, they call 911. And have the professionals who are equipped to come out. There's nothing worse than a freaked-out animal in a car. But the reason, and we're losing money every time we take in an animal. And I don't think it's fair to put our staff in a position where they have to euthanize a healthy animal to make room for somebody else's animal.
Right. And, you know, and, and I'm going to pass these out to, to you if you don't
So my, I, I want to know what, what do you think you should do? Because, uh, if you can't occupy that animal, is he just...
It, it's a fine line to walk with that, you know. Uh, as me and Councilman Reed have spoke about with this situation, you know, it's a very real possibility that anybody from any city could be just traveling through Midwest City to visit family or whatever and find their, find an animal walking down the street and need to bring it in. So, so that's the part we would have to battle if we go to a situation, you know, something like that. Um, if you look at, I believe it's page, the third page in regards to this, if you look at the first and second line item under section B, that first line item is the amount of animal, animals that we as officers brought into the facility. That second line item is the amount of animals that the citizens brought in. And that's what brought this whole topic up anyways. Because what that is saying is that we picked up 601 animals out of our city running the streets, but apparently there was almost the same amount running around the streets that we didn't see. We don't know where they came from. So we do, you know, we are surrounded by communities that don't have animal control, and that does plague us. You know, how do we solve that? I wish I could give you that answer, you know. But we will continue to have to deal with people unfortunately not telling the truth. You know, um, we, we have a saying out there... You know, um, we, we have a saying out there that it, it's, it's a really bad situation and an uncomfortable situation when you're talking to somebody face-to-face, and you know they're lying to you, they know they're lying to you, but they also know you can't prove it. You know, so how do we keep that from happening? I, I don't know. And I, and, you know, and I appreciate Councilman Reed, Councilman Burn, Councilman Burns' suggestions. And, uh, you know, on that note, I had spoke with, I believe it was the city of Chickasha, the lieutenant that's over there, animal control, and they did something similar. That if you bring an animal in, for whatever reason, whether you found it on the side of the road or you wanted to surrender your own animal, it was the same twenty dollars. I, I see where he's try, where they're trying to go with that, but I also don't want to punish the people who, who we know are good-meaning citizens, who are picking animals up off the street. So it, it, it is a good topic for discussion, and, and I don't know necessarily which way we should go with that if we do want to make such a policy change. But, uh, trust me, I would love to see where that is a situation that we can take care of.
Well, don't you think that maybe, um, maybe we should look at, I know that we're looking at this discussion of, of, uh, not renewing the contract with the city of Hara, but how about those animals for two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen? Uh, do they just, you just?
The unfortunate part is we will continue dealing with people that will come in with an animal they found in Choctaw and say they found it in Midwest City, something to that effect. I, I'll tell you like I've told a lot of people, I can't save every animal in the state of Oklahoma, and I'm not going to try. So if, if the other cities can't belly up and, and do what they need to do, then I, I don't see really why our taxpayers should continue doing that for them.
And that's why I wanted to look at a multiple bond.
So does Hara pay any money for the animals coming into our shelter?
Yes, ma'am. Currently, it's the hundred and five dollars that we discussed earlier. That went from eighty-five dollars to a hundred and five dollars.
And that is per?
Per animal that they bring in. And, uh, we, we kind of changed that contract a couple of years ago. It used to be depending on what happened to the animal, this, that, and the other. And I was like, let's simplify this. Let's make it that X amount of dollars, no matter what the disposition of the animal is. So if, if I get a dog in that bit somebody and needs to stay a ten-day quarantine hold versus a dog that comes in and waits for its owner for three days, it's still that same hundred and five dollars. Because the mind, the, the thought process on that is, we're so short-changed on it, does it really matter that, you know, that one costs a little less than the other in reality? You know, it, it makes up for each other. And, and that's what I'll bring up for discussion on, on this, on these first three pages here. And, and I'm gonna illustrate how we are short-changing ourselves on that. Now, first and foremost, I do want to say, these are raw numbers. This is not, the biggest thing that I want to, that I want to get you guys to understand is, if we cut our contracts, this is not revenue gained to the city, what I'm reflecting. What I'm trying to reflect and show to you is money that we are spending. It's almost like we are paying to contract with other people. And Councilman Byrne made comment about the Shelter Planners of America study. I emailed that to all of you today. I, it was a little late, I'm sorry if you didn't get it. I didn't want to essentially print off a forty-page report for everybody. I apologize for that. But you should have it in your email if you have not seen it by now. That quote, or, or that number that they gave was based on a budget of, I think, three-hundred-and-thirty-something thousand dollars. I have no idea where they, in particular, got that number. When I went back and found out that during the time when they were here, our budget was actually four-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars. So when you do the math that they did, which is the shelter budget divided by the amount of animals we brought in, which includes the animals brought in by other cities, that gives you the cost per animal. Now, one thing to consider on this, whether we contract with other cities or not, you know, that, that cost per animal that I've outlined for you for these past four years, that includes everything from my salary to keeping the lights turned on. So whether we contract with these people or not, obviously, I still want a paycheck, and we've still got to have lights on. So there, you know, I, I don't want to say that these aren't accurate, but keep in mind that that's what this includes. So that's what I wanted to reflect, was that, you know, we cut that cost, we're not getting, we're not making money by doing it. But we are losing money by doing it. And if you look at those, if you look at those figures on that, I believe it's the first, second, and third page, I, I took and I broke it down by fiscal year, about how much each of those municipalities paid. And I took and I added all that up, which was the total revenue brought in by the city for these contracted cities. Now, if you actually take the amount of animals that we took in and multiply by what our cost per animal is each year, it's a pretty astronomical number compared to what we took in in revenue. Uh, just for, you know, for instance, two thousand thirteen and fourteen, the, it actually was, quote, and like I say, keep in mind, this is, this includes everything, it was actually costing us thirty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. Somewhere, we're having to pay basically twenty-five thousand dollars to contract with all these cities. Now, that's, you know, where this will actually improve us is, just like Shelter Planners of America stated, the average cost per animal in animal shelters across the country is two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred dollars. If we cut the contract, which accounts for about ten percent of our intake, that cost per animal goes up. Helps how we, it helps us, helps us look better. It also, less animals we have to take in and, and care for, more money to put towards our, you know, city, or our animals in Midwest City.
And they give you a greater opportunity to adopt more animals out as well, and to spend more time being proactive as well, doesn't it?
Correct. I mean, you know, and, and, and I'm not gonna lie to you here, you know. You look at, on, on the, on our stats of just this fiscal year that just ended, hundred-and-sixty-one animals came in from municipalities around that we're contracting with. At, at first glance, you think, well, that ain't much, it's only a hundred-and-sixty-one. If you break this down to a daily and weekly level of what we have to deal with, just last Monday, the day before, the Fourth of July, we brought in, I believe I was told, twenty-three dogs in a facility that holds twenty-four kennels. Let me tell you, the magic and the jumping through hoops it took to keep having to euthanize an animal is ridiculous. You may or may not know July fifth is one of the busiest days for animal shelters due to fireworks on July fourth. It's pretty hard to sleep and enjoy your holiday when you're having to worry about, you know, and I know people say, don't worry about it, you know. It's hard, hard not to. It's my job, you know. But on that Monday, we filled up every single kennel. Five-thirty, one of those contracted cities comes in with three more dogs for us. You know, there, there comes a point where it's, where, where it's like, why are we doing this?
I have a question. Mr. Henson, who all do we currently have contracts with as far as other municipalities that are on the list that are current contracts? I mean, Hara's up for review right now, but.
I'm gonna, uh, go, I'm gonna refer to our sixteen-seventeen and ask the, the chief, is there anybody different other than perhaps Spencer?
Correct. We currently.
So that would be Forest Park, Hara, Jones, Nakoma Park, and Choctaw.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so when is our renewal for Hara that's on this?
It was probably July one.
They're right. They're actually late getting their stuff back.
Okay.
Um, we do have a thirty-day out with the other cities if we want to pull out with them as well.
That's correct.
Is that in each of the contracts?
I believe it is.
Phil?
Adrian, let me ask you a question, simplistic in nature, but kind of perplexed. If, I saw a figure that, uh, costs us a hundred and thirty-nine dollars a day basically to house an animal at our basic, uh, current funding, is that correct?
Not per day. That is basi, that's basically the time the animal is there from when it comes in to where, to whatever disposition it ends up being. That's the average. And, and as I said, that is actually a low number because I don't know where they got their budget figure, to be honest with you.
Well, then, let me ask you this. Why is not our contracts reflecting our cost per day with all these? Why are we charging Hara a hundred and five when it's costing us a hundred and fifty?
It's actually costing us two-hundred-and-something dollars.
Well, I'm just giving that as an example, but why can't our contracts reflect our actual cost?
Right. Myself and Chief Clavens actually addressed that, I believe it was roughly two years ago when we started, uh, because initially, this was, if I recall right, seventy-five dollars. The thought process is we didn't want to just hit them right out of the clear blue with more than doubling their, their, uh, their numbers, or, you know, their amount, their.
In my opinion, our job isn't to subsidize the other cities.
Exactly.
Period. Whether it's costing us one dollar for two thousand and sixteen-seventeen, twenty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. I mean, that's basically us subsidizing those cities.
Right. And that's why I said it's almost paying to contract.
And I understand being good neighbors, and I think that we should be extremely good neighbors. But I don't pay part of my neighbor's utility bills.
Right. And I liked your idea earlier as far as, you know, possibly getting with some of these municipalities and, you know, saying, hey, if you want to bring stuff to the table, you know, as long as we're looking to build the proper facility, you know, that could, that could do more than one municipality, I'm okay with that, you know. And, and the same thing with Ms. Eads here, you know, with, with, you know, I would like us to get some sort of committee together, including our rescue community that does, you know, that, because I, I can tell you, besides the people that work at the shelter, they sure know what's going on there, you know. Right. Absolutely. Right.
I make them up as I go. I stayed at Holiday Express last night.
Well, I, I just want to say this, with, with all that's been said. Um, it looks to me like we are trying to, uh, reorganize. And my thought is that it is pretty bad to all of a sudden just say, okay, we're not doing this. You know, just pulling back because you have too many animals out there. I think we need to do what we're gonna do. We need to do their contracts for this year, and then we, as we, we need to go and start working on it for next year. That's, that's just my personal opinion, so you don't have animals just running around and such. I, I really truly feel that, uh, if we say we care about animals, we can't just all of a sudden make a decision, okay, you're gone.
Well, like, you know, like I said.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying? Okay.
But like I said, you know, with, you know, your, your comment about, you know, we, we just have animals running around. I mean, I, that's gonna happen whether we do it tomorrow or we do it a year down the road.
I know, but.
Until those municipalities take on their own issue.
But this is a discussion we need to have, not just make a be gone, you know, all of a sudden.
Right.
But we do what we've been doing, and we work on making this happen.
So Councilwoman Ellen, are you suggesting, for example, that we agree to continue but put these other cities on notice? On notice that we intend to terminate our agreements with them effective, for example, January one of twenty eighteen, that they're gonna be on their own, and in the interim, we form this committee and we market the idea of a joint municipality geo-bond issue on doing either a, a renovation or a new.
Hey, I'm actually for that.
I would like the chief to speak, because we, I think when we do something, we need to do it in decency and order, not just.
I agree. I'm just asking you a clarification.
On your idea, I think it's a good one.
So I think we need to let the chief talk, so he can see, we can probably give more.
I think we need to let the chief talk.
Yes.
Well, first of all, I'd like to preface my conversation to say thank you for everyone for the very kind thoughts about our animal welfare, and certainly Adrian Sanders. It's not because of me, it's because of the work that he does, his staff, and certainly the people that are here tonight that are passionate about this subject. Give a little historical data, because some weren't here on the council, but, uh, uh, in two thousand fourteen, I went to the city manager, the current mayor and council, and requested that, since we had inherited these contracts, we didn't create these contracts, we inherited those. And when we had the opportunity to take over animal welfare, our goal was to be successful in the welfare of animal, or all the pets that come into Midwest City. We asked that a study be made by Shelters of America. It was a costly study. Uh, I think it was about five or six thousand dollars, I recall. But with the leadership of city management and the council and mayor at that time, the study was done. It was needed, because I had no idea where we were or where we needed to go with the animal shelter. He gave us a footprint of what we need to look at and where we need to be. And this opportunity today gives us the opportunity, the input from Mr. Byrne and from Sean and everyone involved in this gave us the opportunity to analyze these contracts. As Adrian has said, and I want to reiterate, these numbers are very raw. I've actually talked to our finance director, Kristy Baron, today to help us really get a good picture, an accurate picture of what it really costs and what our overhead is, because there's lots of factors involved. But when Mr. Byrne asked me the question, are we losing money? It appears, yes, we are losing money with this contract. You also have taken the dynamics of kennel space, the welfare of the pets, why these people are here. And so I understand your concerns too, Ms. Price, but we will do what the pleasure is of the mayor and the council and the city manager. But from a physical responsibility, which I know Mr. Reed can talk to, we are losing money. We have tried to be good neighbors. We inherited the contracts. We realized we weren't charging enough, so we tried to incrementally increase them because we know they operate on a budget as like we do. But we're at a crossroads, and Mr. Byrne has pointed it out, it's something we need to look at. But we need the direction from the council, the mayor, and the city managers where we go with this. We have contracts in place. We do have an out clause within thirty days. Uh, we didn't enter into an agreement with Spencer because we're having issues recouping our expenses from Spencer. So we don't have a contract with Spencer. So we have eliminated some of the contracts. So we're open to any suggestions, but it causes for lots of thought process, the ability to analyze this issue because it's not been done before. And it's to credit of the mayor and the people on this horse sheet that we're having this conversation. So we know where we're at. Adrian and his staff do an excellent job. It's a very difficult job. Uh, we're fortunate to have the animal shelter that we have. Uh, I'm hoping that there'll be improvements in the future, but it's at the direction of, of this council. So we're, we're open to any suggestions.
Well, as I have mentioned, I'm still looking at how, uh, it, it would've been great if we hadn't been, put them on notice sometime and go and say, listen, you all need to work something out. But, uh, now all of a sudden, we want to say, okay, I'm not, you know, we losing money. You can't, you know, we're not gonna, you know, renew your contract. I think that if we hear talking about how we love animals, we want the best, do you think that's the best to say, okay, we draw back, and where are they gonna take them? Do they have a place to take them? We have not fully given them notice that, uh, we're taking action as this, and I think that we're better neighbors than that, I mean.
We've been a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of good neighbors for the last five years.
And that is correct. And I think you need to give people notice before you make a sound decision on what you're gonna do with animals.
And, and I agree with you, Councilwoman Ellen, but at the same time, I mean, given the fiscal issue, given the greater issue of the loss of life of animals, um, if these cities have to either create their own facilities
That's true.
or contract with someone else besides us, I mean, we're, the only way that we are.
I think they can. I mean, I think if they can, I think we need to give them opportunity, you know, to bear the contract.
Can I, can I, can I just see if I understood what you were saying, or do you want to extrapolate on?
I, no, I want to make a motion essentially. And my motion would be, with regard to this discussion item, we renew the contract with Hara effective through twelfth thirty-one of seventeen. And we put all the other municipalities that we currently have contracts with on thirty-day notification. I've conferred with our city attorney. We have a thirty-day out without penalty. That works both ways. They could choose to out with us, too, if they wanted to. If they wanted to drop it and stop sending us animals, they have that right equally in the contract. That gives them notice. At the same time that we form this committee, if we're gonna try to market it as a joint municipality geo-bond issue in order to build a facility that can adequately address the needs of not only our own municipality, but our neighbors, then that's what we need to do.
Can we put a kicker in there that those that choose to join with us, if they do, we will continue to take their animals in until a new one is built?
At, at the adequate rate that it costs us.
What it costs per day.
Yeah.
But, and that those that have chosen, say, we're out, they're out.
Yeah.
Okay, let me, uh, let me make a point of clarification, just before we get too far down the road. We cannot force, uh, uh, there's a loose use of the geo-bond. We cannot force another municipality to enter into a geo-bond for their community. All we can do is ask that they up the ante on their monetary contributions to us. So I just want to make a, and I'm sorry, Mr. Burns, but go ahead.
Chief, you've heard everything that we've said. We're looking to you now to tell us, are, are we, are we improving the conditions? Or at least, maybe not today, but six months from now, or however long, is it gonna meet your mission if, if we do what we're talking about doing?
Well, before you make a decision, and one, one suggestion I haven't heard, maybe I missed it, is, is perhaps we have a conversation with the communities that we serve and say, we've realized through analysis that our cost is this number. We can't continue to provide the service unless you meet that cost. Are you willing to do so? If not, then we will have to enter into our, uh, clause that says we can't continue your services.
About that is, we go right back to the same issue, and the same issue is twenty-four spaces is twenty-four spaces. And so that's, we've got a finite amount of space that we're dealing with. So even if we get them to raise the cost that they're paying, so that we are not burdened with the financial aspect. So even if we get them to raise the cost that they're paying, so that we are not burdened with the financial aspect, we're still burdened with the reality of, we've only got a total of twenty-four spaces.
And we're two years out from having, if, if everything goes correct, and we do the geo-bond in next, uh, January, February, March, we're another year plus on top of that before it's built, we're two years out. So if we just take this to twelve thirty-one seventeen, and these, these other cities are like, you know what? We'll pay you the amount that it costs, but we don't want to be involved to, to actually build a very, very nice facility. We're still gonna have the same kill ratio problems that we have, we're still gonna have the same overcrowding ratios that we have, and we're still basically subsidizing them with our personnel, our folks are the ones that are getting bit doing workers comp and everything else like that.
Okay, uh.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
I think the only way you're gonna get their attention, participate, is if you fly, say, whether it's even December eighteen, at that point, we're not going to do it at no cost, and then increase the cost of a lot now, and even more in six months, but give them plenty of notice that, that they're on, you know, that assistance that would be there, they're, they're, these are facility, and I think they'll be more cooperative to, to do what, you know, to help with you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Let me, let me, let me just, because one of the, one of the issues that we were looking at today was, what do other cities do? And, um, I don't know if we got all the answers, but, but I know that we determined that Norman doesn't accept any other animals, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And Edmund, we were, I don't think we got an answer.
Uh, I can tell you here, Edmund charges ten dollars for two, but they don't really contract with anybody. Uh, Moore does not contract with anybody. Um, Norman doesn't have a contract with anyone, and those are the feedback, and that was at the eleventh hour of this, today.
So how about Oklahoma City?
I, I'm, I'm not sure, I, when we were driving back from Memphis and my wife was looking all this stuff up, she, uh, said that she thought that Ed, that Oklahoma City was contracting with Valleybrook and Dell City.
I, I would like to ask Katie, since you're here, uh, do you have an opinion on what this discussion is about contracting outside the city? You talked about priority for Midwest City, do you have an opinion?
Opinion on everything.
A real brief opinion.
But in regards to this, yes, sir. Uh, I, I, and it goes both ways. I understand that our fiscal responsibility, um, and then also animal welfare responsibility. I do believe that if we approach these cities to ask for them to contribute somehow financially to us improving our animal welfare services, that we most likely get a positive response, because I don't think that they have the money to do it themselves, but I think that they would have enough to pitch in. So that's my two cents. They've been getting a deal, they've been getting a bargain deal. And I think, like you mentioned, if we sit down and talk with them and say, here's the situation, what can we do? We want to work together, we don't want to leave you high and dry, we know you may not have the money to do what it's going to take to do it on your own. But see, the thing is, is like Adrian said, these animals aren't gonna stop coming in, folks, they're still gonna come in, okay? But we're not just gonna stop it just by cutting contracts, they'll still be there, they'll lie, they'll bring them in. Um, so, you know, and, but again, I, I would always rely on Adrian for his opinion in regards to what we will not have, because he sees it on a daily basis. But I do feel like that, to me, you guys, we're sitting on opportunity. This is where we go to the cities and we say, hey, you know, look at what we're looking to do, we're putting together this master plan. We're gonna improve our animal welfare services and have something bigger and better, and right now, you're getting a deal. And, and this is an opportunity for us to grab a little, little money.
But, but Susan makes, Councilman Eads makes a good point, it comes down to kennel space too. So is priority for Midwest City, or is it for the other communities? And that's what we're, I think we're having this discussion about.
With all due respect, we, Councilwoman Eads, I think you had a motion on the floor, did you not?
I did.
Can you restate, can you say it again?
Can you restate your motion, please?
I would ask that with regard to this discussion kind of, excuse me, this consent kind of, on renewing the joint of the city of HARA, we, uh, we do the agreement, city of HARA, twelve oh one seventeen. Um, and then we had a future date put onto the agenda, uh, the issue of terminating the contracts with the other municipalities, including Morris Park, Jones, McCovey Park, Spencer, and Chalk Top, and put that forward as an agenda item for a future council meeting. And I would ask that we advise HARA of what our intent is. And again, we need forward with the issue of forming a committee to address what we're gonna do with our animal shelter.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Does everybody understand the motion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll now move into our discussion. Thank you very much for the spirited discussion. Go into our discussion portion of our agenda.
First item is discussion consideration of one, an ordinance amending chapter nine, building and building regulations of the Midwest city code, article three, section nine dash thirty-one, international building code. And two, an ordinance amending chapter nine, building and building regulations of the Midwest city code, article three, section nine dash thirty-five, international residential building code, providing for repealer and severability.
Move to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
D two, discussion consideration of one, an ordinance amending chapter nine, building and building regulations of the Midwest city code, article five, section nine dash two oh one, international mechanical code and international fuel gas code. And two, an ordinance amending chapter nine, building and building regulations of the Midwest city code, article six, section nine dash three oh one, international plumbing code, providing for repealer, repealer and severability.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Next item?
Discussion consideration of an ordinance amending chapter nine, building and building regulations of the Midwest city code, article three, section nine dash forty-one, and chapter nine, building and building regulations of the Midwest city code, by taking section nine dash forty-one out of reserve and titling it Roofing Registration Code, and for, and providing for repeal, repeal and severability.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries?
D four, discussion consideration of an ordinance amending chapter nine, building and building regulations of the Midwest city code, article three, section nine dash thirty-one, international building code, and chapter nine, building and building regulations of the Midwest city code, article three, section nine dash thirty-nine, by taking section nine dash thirty-nine out of reserve and titling it Existing Structures Code, Providing for Repealer and Severability.
Move to approve. And a second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Next item?
Next item is discussion consideration of passing and approving an ordinance amending chapter forty, taxation, article two, sales tax of the Midwest city code, by taking section forty dash forty-five out of reserve and entitling it Limited Purpose Tax, sales subject to a seventy-five-hundredths point oh, excuse me, zero point seven five of one percent, which shall provide for the levy of additional earmarked seventy-fifth, seventy-five-hundredths, zero point seven five of one percent excise tax to be expended only for the purposes and in the manner specified in the ordinance establishing an effective date, providing for repealer, severability, and codification, and declaring an emergency. Attached, okay. Attached is an ordinance which would increase the city's sales tax rate by seventy-five, seventy-five-hundredths point seven five of one percent. The increase in sales tax would be divided in the following manner. Forty-two point six percent would be earmarked for the police fund. Twenty-eight point five two would be earmarked and would go to the general government capital outlay and operations fund. And twenty-eight point eight eight percent would go to the fire fund. The proposed increase will enable the police department to increase staffing by six patrol officers over the next three years, beginning in fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. The proposed increase will enable the fire department to increase staffing by three firefighters in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And the added revenue for all three funds will enable each to preserve the required minimum fund balances.
Mayor, I've, I've got a couple of comments and questions on, on that particular item. And if I understand what Mr. Henson just said, too, that, uh, well, I'm, I'm not opposed to the sales tax. I think, I think, I'm not opposed to the sales tax, is that better, sir? That we, uh, we, we're gonna need it. I mean, if we look at the numbers, we truly need it. The issues I've got is that I'm getting phone calls on this also, just like we did on the previous deal, that with the dog, the animal control, is that we, we've got one chance to get this right. And I know from looking at the numbers, in that I'm being asked already that we, we are telling our, our staff, police, fire, guys in public works, streets, people that work parks, that we're, we're taking them into consideration, and we're doing this fair and equitable across the board. And that no one, one part is, is more important than the other part. We're in this together. This is what we're trying to sell to this, these people, and this is what we're trying to sell to the citizens. I don't know if I understand why there is such a gap between forty-two percent to the police and twenty-eight percent to the other two. And I, I, I know we're trying to get to the fund balance in five years, but is there stuff? Is there equipment? Is there staffing? Is there training? Is there anything that we're missing tomorrow, six months from now, and a year from now, that we're gonna miss, because we're more worried about five years down the road on a fund balance? And I, I just need, I guess if I'm asking these questions, I know I'm getting asked these questions. I think I'm not gonna be the only one, I'm not gonna be the only citizen out there that's gonna want to know. Why is there such a gap between the police? And then, and I'm a retired police officer, but I can, the numbers, there's forty-two and then there's twenty-eight. And I just don't, I just want to make sure that we're taking care of everybody and not just one group. So I know that's something that you guys, I'm trusting in you guys to tell me, but I, I just, I think I need to know why this is equitable.
And I'd like to miss, have Mr. Lyon come up and, um, he's, uh, the keeper of these, uh, these numbers and have him explain, uh, why we came up with the numbers that we came up with.
So to begin with, we utilized the two studies, the Matrix Study and the ESCI Study, in order to develop the cost, part of the costing. I mean, we looked at, as we've discussed before, we looked at trending all the data. I don't think anyone really argued much with the trending of the data. And then we looked at the studies and adding six additional police officers and adding three additional firefighters along with, with training and other things with fire. And so we tried to meet as many of those criteria that, that the studies told us that we needed to fund. When we looked at, we did end up trying to look at fund balance at the end of five years to try to create some equity in how the distribution of the funds are gonna be made, because we couldn't just split it one-third, 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 because it's, you know, the needs are different from one department to the other. We have.
And let me just, Tim, if you don't mind, just jump in from the perspective that we have different funding for the different departments right now. The police department, by its very nature, is a thirteen million dollar budget, chief, is that correct? And I think the fire department budget is about ten point four million. So there's a disparity between those, and so a straight line, thirty-three, 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 thirty-three is not gonna work when you have that kind of difference between the budgets.
Over the last five years, um, if you look at the budgets, there's about a twenty-five percent difference in the operating budgets from police and fire. This, like Guy said, at twelve million nine eight, um, for police this year, and fires at ten million five sixty-five. So it's, over the last five years, it's about a twenty-five percent difference, looking at staffing. There's thirty-five point seven additional personnel, I don't know who the point seven is, but there's thirty-five, thirty-five, um, additional personnel in the police department, so their operating costs are, are greater. So, um, we took all that into consideration as we developed the modeling for all the data and, and tried to create, create growth and expenses, and we trended them as fairly as we, we possibly could. And so at the end of the five years, the fund balances are around six hundred thousand dollars, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, and that's just with the, the fire. What about, what about public works and everybody else, is that?
Well, this isn't gonna affect public works, because public works is funded through the utility rates and the enterprise funds. It would affect the street department, you think of the streets as part of public works, they are, and so this would affect the street department.
But, but Councilman knows, the street, the street, the general fund, the balance of the general fund consists of the street department, the parks department, um, nine-one-one, uh, and then all of the, kind of the administrative functions of the city.
City clerk, IT, finance.
And, and so this, this formula, actually, we will, we will see a, at the end of the, at the end of the process, uh, probably a greater consumption of fund balance, uh, in the general fund than in the police and the fire fund.
Yeah, at the end of the five years, the general fund would be more upside down than any of the other two funds. I, I don't know, I think the general fund was, was, um, five hundred and, yeah, about five hundred and ninety-four thousand upside down at the end of the five years, where the police is gonna be three thirty-seven, and fires probably, depending on what we, how you look at the fifth year of the capital outlay, probably about three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
We will be.
At the end of the five years.
Based upon the, these assumptions. Now, when we say upside down, that, that, we use that term sort of loosely. I mean, we will, uh, we're try, we will be preserving the, the required fund balances in, in all of those accounts, and there will be an additional six hundred thousand dollars
Yeah.
in those, in the, in the police and in the fire fund.
Six hundred and fifty thousand.
But will we, we will, we will probably be in that situation where we're gonna be, we'll, we'll be spending more, um, our expenditures will be exceeding our revenue.
That's right. That's, when I was quoting those numbers, that's expenses over revenue, that's not fund balance. That's by the fifth year, the first three years, the funds are, are building fund balance. And then by year four and five, they, they will be eating into the fund balance greater in the fifth year than the fourth year.
So the bottom line is, it's not a permanent fix, what we're doing at this point. I mean, we're, we're looking at a five-year projection that we hope that we can cover for five years.
That's exactly right. We're looking at covering five years, and then, you know, that's a modest one percent growth on the revenue. If we do better than that, then there'll be more money there. If not, then it'll have an impact as well.
But, but Tim, to clarify for the sake of the members of our audience too, we had to dip into the reserves this year to the tune of nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars we infused into the general fund.
So we don't have, we don't have the ability to go to our reserves again for next year.
Not, not without a huge rate increase in our enterprise funds.
And that is not even incorporating adding on the staff for police and fire that the studies have called for.
That's right. That's without adding any personnel this year.
That's just the basic cost of operating the city.
That's correct. Now, and, and we talked about in twenty twenty-five, the, the wastewater recovery.
Is gonna come back off.
The treatment plant's gonna come off, and that'll be point four zero, point four zero one five will come off. And so that'll give us some relief back underneath the nine point one now, whether we'll need a revenue enhancement then.
For something else, right.
None of these projections take into account anything that's projected from the Soon Rose Development two and three, correct?
Well.
Or then, than a one percent growth. And, and, you know, the, the structure of that, that project, we really won't see any additional revenue from the Warren Theater, because that will be, that will be going back towards service and the debt, and then, and then it'll. it'll...
But this point seven five would come out.
That's correct. That's correct. I'm thinking about the three point, the current, current.
And also, for clarification purposes, primarily for the audience, the general fund is not just a big pot of money. The rest of it go into, that's where all other general government operations is funded out of, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
This is a economics one-on-one for me. And we make every, every different entity have their fund balance, correct? Try to.
We make the general fund operating have a ten percent fund balance, and the police and fire required to have five percent. And we do that in the enterprise funds as well.
Why don't we just have one fund balance? Because if something happens, we're gonna take the money from the other one anyway, aren't we? And we're worried about, aren't we worried about each, each one having a fund balance?
We are. I, I think that the, it's a legacy thing that we've had to create these separate funds as a result of prior elections, when, when there were increases in sales tax and, and, but there were commitments to, to always fund, for instance, the police and fire at a certain level. So, when the council adopted the resolutions, um, they were dealt with the fact that we have all of these separate funds. And so, you can't really, I mean, you can't, you can't take police, these, these funds have, the, the money that comes in has to go into these funds. They can't be intermingled. And so, it was, uh, there, there was really no alternative. If you wanna establish some minimum fund balances, you're gonna have to tie them to each one of those funds, because we can't intermingle that money. And, and generally speaking, the, the general fund fund balance, we have historically tried to preserve well in above, well above the ten percent fund balance, because we kinda see that as the mothership. If something really, really, really goes south, we wanna have more than ten percent there for that purpose. You know, quite honestly, a five percent for the police and fire funds really won't carry them very far if we have a calamity. So, that's why we use the general fund as kind of the backstop to that. And I, and I would say that it wouldn't, it wouldn't be unusual to see larger fund balances, um, being, being maintained by other municipalities across the state.
I guess my question would be, if anybody in the audience has any public commentary, because as we've discussed before, this increase of the zero point seven five in sales tax is gonna put us up to being one of the, if not the highest in the metro area on sales tax.
And one thing to consider, twenty twenty-five, point four one does drop off. So, we would be, be far under the...
Assuming we don't need that money and, at that point, for something else. I mean, that's the hope.
And, and let me, let me say, I, I, you know, I know that our department heads are going to, every year, they're gonna manage their budgets effectively. And, and, um, and there is always the ebb and flow that goes on in a budget. Um, you know, you may, you may, you may have budgeted twenty-five positions. And, and I'll use Billy as an example. He's got three, three, three open positions. And, and it, it really hasn't been for a lack of effort in trying to find, fill those positions. But, but you, you wanna find qualitative, qualified candidates. And so, so you may end up with a, with a, you know, vacancies for six months. And so, there are the, always those savings that go on. The chief of police has, always does a, a, a really good job of maintaining his fund balances and, and, to a large extent, growing those towards the end of the year. So, it's not like we're not gonna continue to manage these budgets every year and, and, and be wise, um, and wisely use the, the, the revenue that we're given. These are, these are our best estimates in a going-forward strategy based upon historical trends. But, I fully expect that we'll beat these numbers. And, and I would hope that instead of twenty, you know, that, that this is, that this works out to five years, I would hope that we can, we can get this thing to, to, to sustain us for seven years maybe, or eight years.
Right. And you and I, Mr. Henson, agree, if we could get everybody to shop and spend every dollar in Midwest City, then we would definitely see an improvement in these projections. But that being said, I just think in fairness, I, I would like to hear if there's any public commentary on the issue.
Mr. Thompson?
I think we all are, but this is operating cost for the city in order to keep the city going.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Charles. My name's Charles Thompson, ten four hundred Northeast Fourth Street. And when I was an actor, I was told that you should never follow a kid or an animal. And tonight, I get to do both. So excited. This, uh, tax increase is very dear to my heart, because I happen to be a libertarian. And I think that our country is moving more towards socialism every day. And I wanted to point out a few things. I, I don't wanna be too harsh on the folks in this council, but if I point somebody out, it's not personal. I'm just thinking off the top of my head. But, I don't know how many people realize when the sales tax actually was started in Oklahoma. It was in nineteen thirty-three, first time we ever had sales tax in Oklahoma. And guess what it was for? To fund schools. They said that we needed money to fund schools, so they added a one percent sales tax. The same thing that Governor Bourne was gonna do, tried to pass just recently, which would've been a twenty-two percent increase in taxes for schools. In nineteen thirty-five, the sales tax was renewed, and the money was deposited to the general fund. There was a temporary tax in nineteen thirty-three, then they decided, hey, we like this money, let's go ahead and make it a real tax. In nineteen thirty-nine, and it's interesting, 'cause what happens is we have major calamities in our history. Right around this time, there was the Great Depression. In nineteen thirty-nine, the sales tax was increased to two percent, and the revenues were supposed to be for public assistance programs. In nineteen, and that stayed until the nineteen eighties. And guess what happened in the eighties? We had a major calamity and Penn Square failed. And I remember speaking with Governor Nye, I spoke with him about this. He said he ran on not raising taxes, and he had to raise taxes. He didn't have any money in the budget. They had to raise taxes to keep the schools open. So, they redirected it to the general fund, and they raised it to four percent. In the nineteen nineties, the sales tax was raised to four point five percent. And these are state, obviously, state sales income taxes. And they used that point five percent for schools. Every time that a city or a state raises the sales taxes, or raises taxes in general, it's because we have a calamity. We need that money for something. We have actually, we, in Midwest City, our sales tax before two thousand and four was at three percent. Two thousand and four to two thousand and twelve is three point three percent. Currently, it's at three point eight five percent. That makes us near the top of sales taxes in the country. If we add this sales tax, it'll put us close to the top in the country. I mean, if, if we're not there, we'll be near the top. The sales tax is the harshest tax to put on poor people. When you think about ten percent of your money that you make, and most poor people spend all of their money on goods and services. So, ten percent of that money is coming out. I gotta ask, the question is, if we take a hundred percent of somebody's labor, that's called slavery. At what point is it not called slavery? Apparently, at ten percent, it's not called slavery. But when you come back in five years and you need more increase in sales tax and puts us way over the budget, when's it gonna stop? Government has to live within their budget, just like the citizens, citizens have to live within their budget. And when I listened today, you said that the, the, the budget, the, the people had, running their departments are handling their budgets. And, well, the chief of police just recognized tonight that we've been taking it in the shorts from other cities in the department that he runs. I, I, I got to question the property that Midwest City bought on Twenty-Ninth Street, what it's doing, where the money that we spent there. I sat in this council room not long ago, after we recalled a mayor, because he said, "We didn't have enough money to fund fire departments." We re, we recalled the mayor. And then I sat here, the, the fire department said, "We don't need any more money. We don't need a, a pay increase. We need more people." And you gave them more people. And then you retroacted their pay increase. And I sat here and talked to Mr. Dukes. And, and I said, "Sir, they didn't ask for more money, they just wanted people." And he said, "Well, that's what we're doing." I don't trust the city council or the city of Midwest City to use this money wisely. I see it again, and again, and again. It's gotta stop. We cannot go to the well. One more time, if you raise this to nine percent, wherever it's gonna wind up, and we actually have a calamity, something really happens, and we really don't have any money, what are you gonna do? Where are you gonna get the money? It's like taking water out of the shallow end of the pool and taking it over to the deep end of the pool and pouring it in and saying, "We've increased it." There's no money in people's pockets to fund this organization any longer. I beg you, please, really consider raising the sales tax in Midwest City, because we're at a really pivotal point. We're getting ready to have a Harkins open up, I mean, a, a, a new theater, not Harkins, it's a Warren Theater, open up. It looks like we're gonna start getting some sales increases from that. We're opening up a new grocery store. It's starting to feel like we're gonna start generating some income. If you wanna destroy that, if you wanna end that, talk to any business person. Talk to anybody that runs a business and ask them what their number one cost is. They think about taxes. And you're gonna destroy what you're trying to build, in my opinion. And I will fight it until it gets enacted or gets voted on by the people. I'll run ads in the paper, and I will run ads on Facebook, because you simply are doing a disservice to the city if you raise the sales tax. That's my opinion. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We appreciate it. That being said, is there any further discussion? Chairwood, oh, Mr. Dawkins, how are you?
Craig Dawkins, seven two one, Hunter's Run in Midwest City. Just have a couple of questions. One, in the analysis of the, um, sales tax increase, and this could extend to the bond issue, I know that, um, that's the next item. But, what consideration was given to selling or the marketable assets of the city to, to the private sector, so that those, uh, and, and I wonder what the value of that is. I don't know what the inventory of that is and what the marketable value is. And the second question I have is, um, have, what's, what studies were done, or what analysis was done to analyze how an increase in sales tax will affect durable goods, specifically big-ticket items, the sales of those in our
There's a constant effort, ongoing, to liquidate our property, that, property holdings. It's an ongoing effort. And trying to figure out what mix and get the things we need in to, to liquidate those assets is an ongoing effort, Mr. Dawkins. And something that aggravates me as well. But, again, it's an ongoing effort. As far as, uh, any assessment on, uh, big-ticket items...
Large, large ticket items.
Large-ticket items. Uh, I can't tell you.
Okay.
All, all I can do is tell you what market research that I've read over, typically, is that shoppers have a tendency to shop convenience and not tax rates. And that's consistent through several studies that I've read through. I, I do wanna correct Mr. Thompson, and we will not be the highest in the state, Charles. We will not be. There's several other communities that are significantly higher than us. But, uh, good questions, though.
Yeah.
And, and we are in a constant state of trying to find buyers and, and put our property in the hands of people that wanna develop it, so.
I wanna ask Guy a question about the assets. If we sold all of our assets today, none of that money goes back to the general fund to support any of this, does it?
I would go, um, I believe that the land, for the most part, is in the hospital authority.
So, even if we sold every asset we had, it couldn't go, the money could not generate to the general fund to pay for any of the stuff that we have. And I do agree that we need to sell the assets, some of them, and we are looking at them. But, the argument that if we sold them, it would alleviate the, the budget issues is a false one.
Yeah, I'm not making that argument.
I know, but...
Yeah, I, I just asked.
...made multiple times.
I just asked. Because certainly, certainly with the needs of a new animal shelter and that kind of thing, it seemed that the sale of assets could, could, could assist in that.
Yeah. And I, I guess I would say that on the assets, that, that our goal is to, is to, um, use those assets to, to create the most long-term benefit for the community. And so, um, it's, it's in our best interest to try to identify those users that are gonna really have, have an impact on the community. Uh, and, and try to get those, those uses on the property, so that we, so that we return the money back to the hospital authority. But we also see the, the spinoff and the benefit from, from having the right uses. Um, you know, we, we conduct studies on a pretty regular basis to identify where we are experiencing what's called leakage, where our residents are going to another community to, to shop for this or, or, or for that. Fortunately, we can't figure out how to, how to, how to avoid the leakage with Amazon and...
Yeah, it's called the internet.
And those guys. But, um, and so, that's what we wanna try to do, is we want to try to take those assets and, and address some of the leakage issues that we have in the community. The, the movie theater is a perfect example of, of, of a, of a, of a retail activity that doesn't exist in the community. We know that, that, that our residents are going out of the community for that, for that, uh, for that entertainment. So, we're trying to, trying to address that.
So, would the sale of capital assets that are marketable be of use in some of these bond items that we're talking about? Not, not operations, but the specific projects themselves, capital projects?
I'm sorry?
Could the money be used for capital projects?
Uh, the, for, for one-time types of projects, yes. And let me, Craig, let me, let me just clarify. The compounded principle is, of the hospital authority, is, is, you know, there's only two ways to, to access the compounded principle. One is through, through, if we were to reconstitute the hospital, in other words, if the current, current lessy decided that they were gonna walk and we had to, had to reset the hospital up. It's either that or through a vote of the people. And that's where the, you know, the bulk of the assets are.
Fred Hawk, thirteen oh two South Caldwell. Discussion, I've heard it around town a little bit. It's, I think you've got a double-edged sword in that you're gonna tax part of me, and I've, the folks that are, the services of groceries, shopping here and, and in the locale, you're on, tax those that most likely don't need to pay a fraction of a percent tax, okay? And then, hearing, we're, our community is heavily military, national defense. Retirees that came, that stayed because the community was so open, they liked it, they came back, they went and toured someplace else, and they came back and they've retired here. I've, I've heard two families tell me that, and somehow, it's, here's the thing, well, we need subsidy. Well, they're gonna go to the, the shop. It, right now, it's a good deal. They can shop, Chris, shop, and maybe the new store here and stuff. But, with this, they've already said, and crunched numbers, and they're saying, "Okay, this, this, I'll go out to the base and shop now, because now I'll be able, I'll save out there, 'cause I only pay taxes." So, you know, they go out there and make purchases and go out to... That's, that's as bad as your Amazon. That's as bad, that's as, you know, that scenario. I've also said, being the fly on the wall, and listened to people that are upset with the city. the city, and they'll do anything they can to make purchases without paying sales tax. Very aggravating. But to me, we're gonna drive that wedge, if you will, a little deeper, without educating the folks, do a better job of educating with some kind of communications, say, the infrastructure. I hate using an example, but our examples on our television networks are horrid. But I, lack of entertainment, one night, I'm scanning, and here comes Edmund up, and the big thing about telling folks, they're not any different than us, they have problems, Oklahoma State has problems, Delta, everybody has his problems, but their focus of educating the people was a ten on a scale of one to ten.
Yes, sir.
And they were telling them the story, why we need you to buy here. Parked streets, clean, neat, everything appealing that we like, wanna, so, I'm, I'm skeptical, is it gonna hurt? No, but it's, I think it's gonna hurt folks a, a number, a little bit. They're gonna pay, want to or not, okay? And then, like I said, you have those that, that say, "Well, hey, I can go over here and don't pay taxes, and/or I'll just order some more stuff offline." Anyway, that's my two cents.
I'd like to respond to that, sir. I'm a huge proponent of shop local. And fortunately, uh, when I was a younger lawyer, I worked with a mentor lawyer who happened to be the mayor of his city, and he initiated a huge shop local campaign in that city. And I began to understand what exactly the importance of shop local was. One of the things that I have vocalized since I joined the council in January, is that we need to explain the importance of shop local, which is the point that you're addressing. And if you notice that nice lady back there in the aqua-colored shirt, Kay, give 'em a wave, she's our public relations person, Kay Hunn, if you don't know her. Um, one of her jobs is also to get that picture out there of why shop local means, and what it means, and why it's important to us. Um, and I can assure you that there's been conversations had, and there are already plans, including these two fine gentlemen, our mayor at the helm, and Mr. Henson, as our manager, are gonna come out to the neighborhood association meetings, and meet at the neighborhood association meetings, and give a presentation on why it is we're looking at doing the sales tax increase, why it is we need it. Um, you know, it's a grassroots basis in order to get the information out there. So to sort of respond to your concern, there are efforts being made in that, in that direction.
Well, the, yeah, in, in the past, and no, no criticism, and Mr. Henson's will end the, end the meeting, but just say, "Hey, buy local," and it's kind of preaching to the choir, in some respects. You turn around, I mean, what small audience you're talking to, so folks, and then the banners, you know, says, "Drive if you got blind," how, how many folks are looking at shop? I'm, I'm just saying, the picture's gotta get bigger, one. Uh, the, the message out there, and the other one is that the, the mayors of all the cities, the governors of all the state, this shopping, and for me, I'm not a, I don't get on, I'm, I mean, I'm learning the things, going on computers and stuff, and yes, I do buy stuff, and, because you can't obtain it, but culturally, this world, and this generation's are coming behind, and right now, coming up with this scenario, everything they do is on that dead gum bloody iPad, iPhone computer, and it's, if it's there, that's where they order. But we need to, that, that group, I just said, governors, mayors, all of us, they need to capital in Washington, saying, somehow, and I don't want any more government in my life, by any stretch of the imagination, but at the same time, the sales tax, and I call California, and California says, "Oh, yeah, we can ship that to you, boom, boom, be here." And it's here, and having been a business person, the burden of doing that tax is a, I mean, it's a pain, and more than what they give you, one tenth of one percent to do all the work you do to get that sales tax collected, and put, and, and poured into them. But somehow, we've, that big pool, we've gotta force them to send that money back somehow. And, and I did, told, uh, Mr. Bernis last week, and I've dropped the ball on that, but so many times, having dealt with that, they say, "What cities?" And the source, it's coming to Midwest City, and order your concrete, order your stuff, and bring, come here. But so many of your suppliers, and from my time in construction, it's just like the other day, I went out, I made a purchase, and it, but it's, they use the zip code. My zip code, you go inside, it does seven, what, guess what happens? It's Oklahoma City. I said, "Whoa, whoa, it's Midwest City." I had, I've had some change it, and then they'd get Midwest City. But so many, even on the internet, put the zip in there, it brings up, "No, it's not Oklahoma, it's Midwest City." Well, I don't care what yard, here's what the zip code is, and it's, and if they do collect the sales tax, here's where it went, Oklahoma City. I mean, that's a big challenge right there itself, too.
That's, uh, that's exactly right.
And, and, you know, Fred, we have, we have spent a lot of time, um, on this subject, in trying to educate the folks. Can we go back and touch them again? We try to do it at least once a year. Um, we actually even, particularly out on the east side of the community, where, I mean, we get, we get the Oklahoma City zip code, but then the folks out east, way out east, have a Choctaw zip code, and a Choctaw, they get their mail out of, out of there. We actually sent letters out into that geographic area, describing what the circumstances were, asking, and really, the only way that you can, that, that someone can really know is to, is to sit down and calculate what the sales tax rate was that was applied to their purchase. That's the only way you're really gonna know that, and, and then when we find those that are not charging it, then we, then we advise the tax commission that, that they're not collecting it properly, and we start that process up. But it is an ongoing battle. We've gone to the post office to see if we could get zip codes changed. Well, they really don't care about corporate boundary lines, their zip codes are for delivery of mail. And so, uh, it's un- it's an unfortunate situation where we find ourselves.
And what, what we need to do is wear our Oklahoma State Legislature out-
Yes.
-on this subject, and, and get them off high center and do something, you know? And, uh, and that includes allowing municipalities to, uh, be able to access abhorrent tax as well, 'cause that's where we find ourselves in. I mean, our costs for providing the basic services for our citizens have not gone down. Uh, they continue to climb every year. Our revenue sources remain the same, sales tax, fines, and fees. And with, and we're the only state in the Union that does not allow municipalities to access abhorrent property taxes. So that puts us, and I, I, Mr. Thompson and I had a spirited discussion the other day about this, that puts us, or pits us, against every other municipality in the state competing for the same dollar. And, 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 in this case, the one that gets the most toys wins, and that's what we're, that's what we're all trying to do. So it's a, it's a vicious circle, and, uh, and we're trying to, uh, and, and you're, I will, you're right. We, we haven't done a good job of educating our community and educating our public. We're stepping it up, and we're, we're, we're trying, we're trying to get the message out to everybody we possibly can, so, uh, we're, we're, we're trying.
Well, i- it's gonna be tough, because the communities around us, and everybody runs on this grow, 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 and I still say the same, that sooner or later, the, we're, they're all, we've, we've hit the wall sooner, because we don't have that growth. Mustang, Norman, Moore, it, the housing, the people coming into the community, fifty-five thousand, I'm nineteen forty-eight, as a child, my whole time here, and it's a little growth in the streets where I grew up, where dirt, et cetera, et cetera, but have, we've got fourling. But our, but our population is really plateaued, we've taken out, you know, taken out as many houses as we move in, we're just all hitting our heads upside the wall sometimes, but, but we want growth, but again, at some point, the, everyone runs out of this growth factor, and, uh, the expenditures, and you've created that we want more swimming, we want swimpools, sidewalks, golf, we want, we want more, uh, parks and everything. That, where's that money come from to pay for all that stuff, folks? Where's it come from? And, and that's it, and that's where we're at. We're, at some point, for this community, sooner is that, that we've hit that plateau. And, uh, I, and you know, I don't worry you're gonna get them to do that, and you're going to the well, as an example, you're coming to the, to the few, or, or the number is smaller to go try to get these dollars from, and the home values, et cetera, property values, I mean, it's a challenge. I, I don't know, the, and we keep talking about the, the new grocery stores coming in, well, guys, for crying out loud, Crest is gonna lose sales, Crest over here's gonna lose sales, across the street's gonna lose some sales. It's not magic, they didn't build five hundred new homes over here, all of a sudden, gonna help this grocery store. It isn't gonna happen. Somebody's revenue's gonna be a little bit less, I mean, you might catch some people coming over for curiosity, to see if they've got some specialty foods they want, and maybe come for out east, and that's it. Miam, humble opinion, these new, all the restaurants up and down Douglas, and it, used to go up to Edmund, Edmund told me, "Oh, they're growing, growing." Watch that, you go Broadway St. and watch them closing restaurants, and get auctions in the mail, we're auctioning so-and-so's. They went to, and we're gonna go through it, I think. Get pizza, are wonderful, been there forever, it's closed? Well, yeah, well, look at the competition. But nothing to support it. We don't have the growth of revi- I mean, people opening their wallets up and buying lunches, and dinners, and hamburgers joints on every corner, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk. Is there any further discussion? Bobby, did you wanna address counsel?
Mayor Dukes, and city manager Henson, and council, I'm Bobby Holland, two zero two, East Rickenbacker Drive, in Midwest City. I wanna speak on behalf of the taxes. I think we need them. We have a desperate need for more policemen, maybe more firemen. We need the money to help the city for the employees that we have. And I'd like to ask Mr. Thompson, if you don't like it, is it coming out of your pocket?
The higher taxes will be about my pocket, yes.
No.
Yes.
Are you gonna fund the city? That's what I'm asking you, if, are you gonna fund the city if this sales tax does not Because we need the taxes. I may be old, but I'm not dead yet. And I, no, I don't think so, because our st- our city needs it. We need the taxes to, to fund Midwest City. And I'm here on behalf of myself, my daughter's not here tonight, my husband is, we support the sales tax.
Thank you, Bobby, I appreciate it.
We feel like we need it. Thank you.
That being said, is there any further discussion?
I'm Steve Seaveneller, and I live at ninety-six oh four Kent Drive. I have a question. The thing I don't understand is, when you drive down Twenty-Ninth, all that new area's completely packed. Now, you can't convince me that your revenue stream hasn't grown significantly. I think your revenue stream has probably grown more significantly than what your citizenry, uh, their revenue stream has raised, because their revenue stream's probably been pretty flat. But I just don't understand why you need a higher sales tax, when it appears as though you're doing rather well over there.
Well, I would be happy to, to spend some time with you, and go over our revenue for the last five to ten years.
Well, you surely got a ballpark as to how much it's increased since that opened?
Well, and, and, and I can tell you that the, that for the last five years, we haven't increased at all.
With all that activity over there?
Well, you have to, you have to understand that, that, so, that project came out of the ground two thousand two, two thousand three, two thousand and four. And so, yes, I, I would, I would hate to think what condition we would be in if we hadn't done that project, okay? But that, that, that revenue is, is, it's pretty well plateaued. I mean, it's, it's been busy, it's, it's, it's been busy for the last ten years, but it doesn't mean that the, that the actual numbers down there are going up. So, um, um, and, and you gotta remember that as a municipality, it, we're, we're not just what goes on down at Twenty-Ninth Street. We are, uh, you know, we, we have experienced losses in revenue as a result of other retail development going on outside of our community. Um, when the Choctaw Walmart opened up, significant, uh, effect-
You know why that is?
Well, I, I would, would, would say that a large part of it has to do with it, it's more convenient for all the people in Choctaw.
Did you ever go to that Walmart?
I, I do on a regular basis, sir.
Uh, you get a lot better service at that Walmart?
Well-
A lot better service.
Well-
That's the reason people go there.
Well, I can't control the-
And it's a lot safer also.
I can't control what Walmart chooses to do, okay?
It's not, it's not Walmart, it's the culture, okay? I tell you, go to Norman, and do some shopping there. Uh, the customer service in this town is extremely bad in most places. Uh, I invite you to go down to Crest down there, and compare the stores. I think there needs to be, I think part of your drain, if you wanna call it that, is the fact that the customer service in this town is very poor. The selection in a lot of the main stores is just not there compared to other stores. You go to Kohl's over here, you can't find a lot of items that you want. Go to the one in Edmund, take a look, and see what you find. I bet their inventory's at least four times higher, with a lot more, uh, selection. That's one of the reasons people lose to the internet, is because of selection. But I, I'll give you another example. I went into Brahms, oh, about six months ago. There was a kid, there was a cashier, that didn't know what the change was worth. They just hired him, he stood there looking at it. He didn't know how to make change. We've had similar experiences in Midwest City, and, and I think it's just totally unacceptable. And I think that's a lot of your problem.
Sir, and in all fairness, I, I'd like to address your concern. I think the concern that you're expressing is a common phenomenon nationwide. It's not just Midwest City, there is a loss of the importance of customer service overall.
Go down to Norman, I invite you to go to Norman, go to the Hipton in Norman compared to this one, see what kinda customer service you get. Go to Crest down in Norman, see what kinda customer service you get compared to this.
But sir-
Go to Jimmy's Egg. There's a really prime example of poor customer service.
But those aren't city issues, sir. Those aren't something that we have any control over.
But that's, that's, that's my point. In fairness-
We have zero control over how a private business, and I have a private business here in Midwest City, and my staff has exemplary customer service. Anytime I'm in Crest, and I ask where something is, the person stops what they're doing and takes me to the aisle where it is. So sometimes you get good employees, sometimes you don't, but nobody sitting here, nobody in this city can tell a private entity that they have to provide good customer service.
Nobody said you have to tell a private entity how to do it, but maybe you could somehow try to foster the idea with the businesses, that, you know, maybe they need to step up their customer service if they wanna compete with these other areas.
And the number one complaint every business gives is hiring somebody that actually wants to work is almost impossible.
Chick-fil-A does it.
Okay.
You know, I've heard this story for years about how, "Oh, my God, I can't hire anybody that's worth anything." You know, all these fast food places, well, it's the, the people we get, well-
Chick-fil-A-
How in the world does Chick-fil-A find them all?
Because Chick-fil-A pays higher.
How much?
Chick, I don't know, I don't know what, but they do pay higher.
Are you sure they pay more?
They do.
Well, it sure makes a big difference, I can tell you that.
And I can tell you that Chick-fil-A's customer service here in Midwest City is fantastic.
I agree with you a hundred percent. Can't get any better.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. Ms. Thompson, with all due respect, we really need to move on.
I understand, I'm getting sick of it, too. But he said that our taxes have been flat. I took this off the, uh, city website, and I can't read it, 'cause I'm getting old.
Do you want me to use my glasses?
But, uh, it says, sales income, s- sales taxes, of course, this is including, you know, in two thousand two, we had a three percent sales tax, it went to three point three percent, and then three point eight five, but in two thousand two, it looks like we took in eighteen million, roughly, and in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, it looks like we took in thirty-one million in taxes. Does that sound about accurate?
I, I, I couldn't tell you offhand.
Because you said that, that taxes haven't increased that much, but that's about a seventy-three percent increase, so-
Well, and, and as you noted, there were, were two sales tax increases that occurred during that same period of time.
I would agree with that, but my, my point is, is that you actually have gotten seventy-three percent more money over the last, whatever year- percent more money over the last whatever year in, in sales taxes. Now, obviously, there's other taxes associated with that. The average income in Midwest City in the last ten years has only risen about thirty-three percent. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
I could, yeah, please. Thank you.
One of the big reasons for, one of the biggest reasons for an increase in that period was around two thousand and twelve, when the sales tax went into effect for the sewer plant. And so, that is not money that the city can use to operate, to pay for the police department or the fire department. That's money that's dedicated to pay for our debt that we have in constructing that sewer plant. So, that's in the sales tax.
That's that point four one that falls off in twenty twenty-five.
So, I mean, I know when I've, I've looked back at our trends, I mean, that's when I see a big buck. And that's all going toward that, so.
With, with respect, in two thousand twelve, thirteen, there was above, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, there was above, in two thousand ten, there was above. In fact, you've only had a couple years of down, it looks like.
Would those be the last three years that were down?
Yeah, the last three of, he doesn't have, okay. But in the last three of, in three of the last five years, we're looking at it being down. When I looked at our revenue the other day, I don't have the exact numbers with me, but I know that we were looking at, um, our projections for next year. We're gonna be in the same range as they were in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. So, it's, it's been pretty flat lately.
Thank you, Chris. With that being said, any further discussion?
I would like to just say one thing. You know, when you look at it overall, I, I used to think that, I mean, it, it makes sense, but if you really focused on or highlighted why it's down, the, you know, uh, internet buying and different things, I mean, then it became a little more understanding of why, how we can grow so, you know, how, how so many areas are doing so well and how we can be down. But I think if you, you know, shed more light on what we're really losing in some of these other areas, then it becomes a much more understanding. That's it.
And, and so much of what happened on Twenty-Ninth Street, I mean, it's, uh, we relocated a Target store that was across the street. And so, it wasn't as if you were bringing in Target as a new store into the, into the, into the city. When we, uh, when Kohl's opened up, I'll just use Kohl's or Penny's as an example, that wasn't, you know, it, that wasn't too distant, uh, time-wise from when, when Dillard's closed, closed up. Um, so some of this is money moving around and businesses moving around. And, and, and then when you have the, the event like, regardless of the customer service questions, but, but, um, when you have Walmart open up on Twenty-third, up on, up in Choctaw, it was a huge impact. Uh, it was a significant impact when Sam's opened up their new store in Moore. And then that was followed by opening up a new store in Edmund on Thirty-Five. Well, those, all those things come into play and, and, and so we're, and, and now we're gonna see Sears closing their doors in, in, in September. Will it be a huge impact? It won't be like losing a Walmart, but it will still be, you know, a loss in revenue. Um, so it just, it, it's an ebb and flow all the time.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would move that we approve this item, given the circumstances. I don't believe that we have choice.
Second. I have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Hawk?
Just had a business thought. What happens if we do quite the opposite? We lower our tax a half. Has anybody crunched on, it'll be okay, Pat. Has anybody sat there and said, you know, volume? I mean, I've worked crunch numbers and we did, and business, you know, you gotta get over this plateau of three men. You gotta get this plateau of six men. When you do that and then you overhead go down, this goes down. So anybody said, who would we draw, would we bring in Dell City, more Choctaw, more this one? Let's go down a half percent and volume goes up. I don't, restaurant, that, my point earlier about the military, go, go with the base. We got the large number. Well, does that stop them going to base? Does that influence bring somebody else? I'm just saying, crunch numbers or people crunch these numbers off, you know, when you're in business, you look at P and Ls, you look at departments, you look at all these things, who's revenue, who's not revenue, et cetera, et cetera. I don't, and is that a concept? It's, well, go take him out back and shoot him, but some city somewhere, somebody said, let's crunch that and try that. What the heck?
Sales tax really doesn't drive sales. Convenience does.
Okay.
And so, and we're talking, and to put this in perspective, hang on a second, Sean. To put it in perspective, if somebody's going to drive to the base and spend an extra hour shopping for a savings of seventy-five cents per one hundred dollars, I don't think that they're looking at time to value of money.
But the, but the million dol, but the, the question, though, I mean, the revenue, the, the increase, that volume, the, I mean, yeah, it's mine new, when, when we talk about us individually and individuals budgets and monies they're gonna spend, they're gonna save hundreds of, fifty dollars here. It's kinda like, it's kinda like our Milly's deal. It's, well, it's only gonna be seven here, but seventy, eighty dollars for the year for this group and so much a month for this grouping up. But just that, that sheer vo, volume, is it there? I, I don't know. Is, is that gonna drive them? I, you know, I, I just, that's just that thing. We could, we could sit, might do this for a couple hours or all day.
People shop based on where the closest store that has the item is. I, I wouldn't go to Dell City if my Walmart was closer or a place that was closer. I wouldn't go to Edmund if the place I could buy it was closer, if Edmund or Dell City had free sales tax. Because I look at my time. I'm, and it's convenient to me. If I can go spend five minutes picking something up versus thirty minutes, I could care less what your, what your taxes are. And I could actually care less if it saves me a dollar or two. Because my time is worth more than a few cents here and a few cents.
But then that goes to the internet. It's, it's, it goes right straight to the internet.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk. I appreciate it.
You know, and I think, I think you really have looked at it. And if you looked at how much you'd lose if it didn't work, then we're in the hole of much more, real quick.
We do have a motion on the floor.
We have a second.
We have a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? We now move into the new business and public discussion? Oh. Too excited to get out of here. I'm sorry.
Discussion and consideration of passing and approving a resolution of the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, authorizing the call, the calling and holding of a special election in the City of Midwest City, county of, county of Oklahoma, state of Oklahoma, on Tuesday, October tenth, twenty seventeen, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, with a question for their approval or rejection of approving ordinance number thirty-three oh eight relating to the levy of an additional excise tax.
Move to approve.
Second. Have motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got just one discussion thing on this. Just, just so everybody knows and makes it perfectly clear, we didn't just approve a tax increase. The people get to vote on it, on this election right here. I mean, that, that's, that's kinda what it, all we're doing is giving people the opportunity to go yes or no.
It's up to you. Okay, I do have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Next discussion item.
Discussion consideration of issuing a proclamation, calling for a special election in the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, county of Oklahoma, state of Oklahoma, on Tuesday, October tenth, twenty seventeen, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, with a question for their approval or rejection of ordinance number thirty-three oh eight relating to the levy of an additional excise tax.
Move to approve.
I have motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Now, we move into the new business public discussion of our agenda. Anyone having anything to bring forward to the council, please come forward.
Hello, Bob Tony, one sixteen West Ridgewood Drive. I just wanted to, on behalf of the Neighborhood Association, uh, we, we brought a request here a month or so ago about, uh, some lights, light poles in the community. And, uh, Patrick and Billy, uh, got back with us on that and said that they're basically gonna attempt to make that a pilot, is that right? A pilot, uh, trial type thing. So anyway, I just wanted to say thanks for checking into that for us. And I'll pass that along to the Neighborhood Association. I mean, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. Appreciate it.
Question, can, can we bring up new business in this? This is new to me. So can we still, can I, can I make a statement?
Yes, sir, you can.
Mr. Hawk, uh, Mr. Sullivan is not here tonight. I'd hoped he was gonna be here and we were gonna hook you guys up. What the plan is on what, the issue that you've got in your neighborhood with the lights and the noise is that we're going to set up a meeting and we're hoping to schedule it tonight, but since he's not here, I can't. We are working towards getting a neighborhood meeting with people over there and it won't be your responsibility to contact them. We're gonna do it through a robocall. So hopefully next time he's here, that you're here. If not, I'll make sure we get a date and we'll schedule it, uh, around your schedule. It'll be at night so that you're, the neighbors over there, and we're not gonna expect you to make the contact. We'll do it through a robocall.
I've got, I've got one thing. Midwest City has a new app, my underscore M W C. There's a spot on there for you to report a concern, a, a pothole, a light out. There is an agenda center, an alert center, calendar telling you what's going on. You can make online payments from your phone. It talks about the facilities, job opportunities, any upcoming news, community events, real estate locator. It's a great, pretty snazzy little app. We tried one a few years ago and we had the very best efforts and it was a little bit slow. But this one is really good. And I encourage everybody, it's M Y underscore M W C. Download it, use it, let your friends know. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call to order the, uh, Midwest City Municipal Authority.
Hospital Authority.
Or Midwest City, uh,
Hospital Authority.
Hospital Authority, I'm sorry. We don't have a meeting for the municipal, municipal authority. I call this meeting in order. We do have a consent agenda. These items are placed on consent agenda. So the trustees of Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience, wish the discussed item be removed and heard in regular order. Move to approve. Second. Have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We have one discussion item. Go ahead.
Discussion consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers or make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. No action is necessary on this.
Any new business or public discussion to bring before the hospital authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call to order the, uh, Midwest City Economic Development Commission. Uh, we do have, uh, three discussion items. Go ahead.
First item is discussion consideration of approving the minutes of the staff briefing and regular meeting of April eleventh, twenty seventeen, May third, twenty seventeen, and May twenty-second, twenty seventeen, special meetings as submitted.
Move to approve. Second. Have motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Second item.
Discussion consideration of entering into a contract with the Midwest City Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year twenty seventeen, eighteen, for three thousand dollars per month to implement an economic development event to im, I'm sorry, per month to implement economic development events in the City of Midwest City.
Move to approve. Second. Have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Third item.
Discussion consideration of accepting the Midwest City Chamber of Commerce's quarterly report for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Move to accept the report. Have motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Move into the new business public discussion for the development, or Economic Development Commission. Hearing none, we're hereby adjourned.